We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in heart.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us tonight. We are going to start with election of Board of Education officers. So I would ask for nominations for Board of Education Chair, please.
I'd like to nominate Auntie Bronia for Board Chair.
Okay, so. Second, Chris. Thank you. Are there any other nominations for Board Chair? Okay, hearing none. Board preference, would you like it to go by roll call or do you want to do a hand ballot? How many in favor of roll call? Raise your hand, please. Okay, great. All right. Mr. Bronia, how do you vote for yourself?
Aye.
Mr. Davey. Mr. Davies.
Aye.
Mrs. Klein.
Aye.
Miss Patano is not here. Ms. Phelan.
Aye.
Ms. Pike.
Aye.
And who did I miss? All set, great. Chair Bronia, I turn the meeting over to you to finish elections.
Okay, well, looking for nomination for Vice Chair.
I'd nominate Sue Pike for Vice Chair.
I guess we'll do the same. Mr. Davies, aye. It's fine.
Aye.
It's feeling.
We just have to speak up so we can, everybody can hear us.
We can't hear.
Do you vote for yourself?
Aye.
Mr. Davey.
Aye.
Okay.
And you?
Oh, and me, yeah, I guess. Okay, now we have a Chair and a Vice Chair, and I'm looking for nominations for Board Secretary.
Nominate Ben Davis.
Mr. Davies.
Present, aye.
Ms. Pike.
Aye.
Ms. Phelan.
Aye.
Ms. Pike.
Aye.
Mr. Davey, aye. Okay, that is. Oh, me again, aye.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have officers for the next two years. And now move on to comments from the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to make a comment? Make sure you say your name and address to the record, please.
My name is Bernice Dixon. Address is seventy-two Tinker Pond Road, Bolton, Connecticut.
And I am Ross Lally, forty-one Notch Road, Bolton, Connecticut. And we're here as registrars and voters.
Correct. So I am one of the registrars. Ross is my deputy. The other registrar is still at work and wasn't able to be here tonight, but we're speaking for all of us. And our reason for being here tonight is to request that the Board of Ed helps us solve a problem. So we, as you all know, this is a presidential election year coming up. We had, that includes a presidential preference primary in April, state primary in August, and the election in November. By law, all three events must take place in the exact same location. So we can't deviate like on one of them. So I know that interferes, we've been, the middle school here has been designated as District One's polling place in Bolton, now that we have two districts. And we've been working together to use that space in the gym. However, April second interferes with the current school calendar with school being in session. And when the calendar was made, that date was scheduled for April thirtieth. The state moved it up a couple of months ago to April second to conform and be the same time as on New York primary. So those are conditions that happened or situations that are out of our control, and now we have to deal with it. So that leaves us with no place to have the presidential preference primary voting for District One on April second. So we are here to request that possibly with enough notice, you're able to change your calendar. We did do have, I don't know, how much time do you usually allow in them?
Usually three minutes a person.
Three minutes a person, okay, that's good. So because now you got nine.
Oh, okay, so now we, okay, and this is.
Identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Sandra Pierre. I'm Democratic Register's voter, a resident of thirty-seven Brandy Street, one of your neighbors. We're all neighbors. Direct neighbors. So anyway, so we prepared a little, our own bullet point type of thing. I'd like to start to go through it. We don't want to go through too much unless you're allowing time for interaction with you. I'm not sure how you're going to do that or if you're going to wait till later. But the issue I've already addressed is that the primary was moved to April second. The only way we can have a solution is between the registrars of town and the Board of Selectmen, Board of Education. And I've indicated primaries and general elections must be held in the same election, same location. Both registrars must agree on the location. If one of us doesn't, it goes to the Board of Selectmen and what, and then, and they don't, and the state gets involved. We don't want that. The law is the law, and we have our job, and we have to do it. So we just want to let you know, that's why we're here. The site must be ADA compliant, be secure for voters, ballots, equipment, staff must have adequate parking, all the things that the center school has, which is why it's chosen as a spot. And the site must be available for those elections, April second, August thirteenth, November fifth, plus the evening before and the morning after for setup and take down respectively. And we've not had issues with that in the past. We work with you. And we must make decisions and notify the Secretary of State by January twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-four. So time is short, that's why we're here now. We don't want to wait till the eleventh hour to come here and try to explain. We have considered in the past, of course, the Center School Gym, which is our preferred location. We've considered the Bolton Congregational Church Education Building. We've considered the Fire Department Buildings. We've considered Georgina's Restaurant. We've considered the Senior Center, the library, and the tent on the town ring. None of those is totally or as adequate and meets the requirements as being a school. If we, we can't really deviate from the requirements.
The requirements are set by the state and the federal government, so they all have to be ADA compliant. They all have to be a secure place for voting, even that includes the voters coming in, the, you know, the staff who works there. And it's all spelled, so, you know, we have a grid that we've used to check each one of these places against. And really, the school comes up, the, you know, the school keeps coming up as the number one. And I know some people were interested in, why couldn't we use the fire department? And so I just really wanted to address that specifically.
To the mic, be one's ear. There you go. Pardon me, step up to the mic.
Yeah, okay. There, I'll step up to the mic. So there were some concerns about, you know, why couldn't we use the fire department? And so just to go through them for you, the parking is really not adequate for the expected high volume. We're expecting this to be a contentious election with high volume like we had in twenty-twenty. And even then, we had lines around the school and parking place was filled. And the firehouse is not really designed to be secured while allowing continuous public access, so that's a challenge there. And we also talked about during the period of setup, voting and takedown, which is about forty-eight hours total for each of the elections. The fire trucks would need to be stored at another location. The only really good one, and it's not good, is Herrick Park. I should say the only place we could find to put them is Herrick Park. And they would have to be stored outside. And then that becomes a challenge because the trucks have exposed equipment and they lack door locks. And they have to be guarded to prevent theft and vandalism, which would reduce their effectiveness and ability to respond to alarms. And even if they don't get vandalized, they're exposed to weather damage. It gets snow in April and wind or rain, and then you got to clean up, do that if you can, and get the trucks moving. So again, a delay in response time to situations that are critical for somebody's life or livelihood or residence. And the other thing was not, not all the fire equipment can be stored at Herrick Park temporarily. Some of it has to remain at the firehouse. So two ramifications for that is it delays response. They have to go to the firehouse, get the truck, you know, then down to the trucks. And then when they go to the firehouse, there's people coming in to vote. So you're going through, you know, it's, it's a safety concern, and it also interferes with voting. And then the truck bay cannot be climate controlled adequately. And it can get damaged. It's uncomfortable for poll workers and the voters. And it's damaging for our voting equipment, which is twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven years.
Twenty-seven years old and falling apart. We have six machines, and that's just the bare minimum to cover what we need for a primary with backups. And if the backups fail, then we're really starting to get into trouble.
And trouble means hand counting, which means we may not have results until sometimes several days later, especially if we have, have twenty-two or twenty-three hundred voters who cast the ballots that have to be in.
Because we had like ninety-plus percent of turnout last, you know, last presidential.
We have a midnight deadline to get the numbers to the state. So you can't hand count and get that done by midnight. It's impossible.
Yeah, so the, and then the, so the humidity, the humidity messes up the ballots. They get damp, they curl, they don't feed into the machines. And then it's, they jam them, and that causes delays in the voting. And then the heat causes the tabulators to fail. We had one fail, it was last year or the year before. And they don't have any replacements for them. They have some old machines that are not working. Like, you know, the contractor will cannibalize to get parts, but if ours break and they don't have parts for them, that's it. And so the state gets new ones, so.
And they are working on that right now, they tell us.
Checks in the mail.
Could you also, we're really not supposed to do a Q and A here, but I think it would help facilitate our process right now. Could you also explain why the church is not an option?
Well, well, to our meeting.
Any, somebody.
Which church? Which church are you? Which church are you talking about? For District One?
District One.
Bolton Congregational Church would be an option. There are two problems there. One is parking, and the other is handicapped access. The building is handicapped accessible, but we are required by law to have two handicap parking spaces. They don't have two.
So we do, we actually do, but they're hard to get, Joe.
Correct, and they're, the, yeah, there are two, because they've moved their church office, they've also moved some things around.
The back part of that parking lot's not very conducive to a lot of traffic.
Exactly, that's exactly true, Ben, thank you.
Yeah, and people will not know that there's where the park, even if we market, you'll get people who, we say handicap only, you'll get people who'll go back there to try to vote and rapidly fill all the parking around the church.
And the other thing, we do use Bolton Congregational Church's Chandler Hall as our backup location. Should we need not only a primary location for voting, but a backup location? Should there be a fire, a power outage, a water break, something that would prevent us from accessing the primary location? State's a little bit more lenient on the backup, as long as we have, we can make it happen. But they're not lenient about it for the primary, primaries or the main election.
Thank you for answering that. I appreciate it. And so if, is there anything else you would like to share? Because I also have a letter from a member of the Board of Selectmen who could not be here this evening that I need to read into the record also.
Okay. Is there any, the other thing, if, we, what we would like to also state for anybody on the board, if anybody has any questions, please feel free to call us, email us. I, we've got a whole page of references here. If you want to know where these laws and rules came from, we'll be glad to share. We didn't think you'd want to see it all tonight, but we're available for that. And so please don't think that, you know, we're not responsive, because we are and we're available.
We appreciate that. We are going to be hopefully moving some things up on the agenda, so I would just encourage you to hang out for just a little bit, if you don't mind, okay? So if I could, Chair Bronia, read this into the record, thank you. Dear Bolton Board of Education members, my apologies for not being able to be at the meeting this evening in person. I am writing this letter to express my support for changing the school calendar in a way that would allow us to use Bolton Center and high schools as polling locations, but my understanding is that the ask is just for Bolton Center School, but still at a municipal district.
Yes.
For the presidential primaries in our fall elections. I've heard from various residents who are concerned about the practice we have implemented that involves voting in a Catholic church-owned building. They have also expressed a desire to understand why the town has chosen to use a church building as a polling location. It is my opinion that voting for any election should not play, take place in a building owned by a religious affiliated entity or in a space that contains religious relics, as this violates the separation of church and state. It is not welcoming to our residents who feel uncomfortable in such a space to the point that they may feel disenfranchised and unable to exercise their right to vote. To this end, I respectfully ask that the Board of Education work with the school district administration to utilize our center and high schools as polling locations for our municipal, state, and federal elections, beginning with presidential primary in the spring of twenty-twenty-four. It is my understanding this would also require access to the location on the day prior to the election for registrars to set up for the elections. I hope that the Board of Education members share this opinion with me and will work with our dedicated registrars and voters to overcome any challenges that might exist to utilizing our school buildings as polling locations, as it is my understanding that we do not have sufficient alternate locations to utilize within our two polling districts. If there are barriers to implementing this, it would be helpful to understand what these barriers are so I can provide this information to residents when this topic comes up in conversation. Respectfully submitted, Amanda Gordon, twenty-three, Loft Lane, Bolton. Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Excuse me?
Hi, I'm Cheryl Uden. I live on Thirty-One King Drive. And as a past registrar voter, trying to do things in one district was tough enough. Now we have two by state mandate. It's very difficult. They're within a rock and a hard place. They have state laws that they have to abide by for a small town. If we can't try to come together for one day, for three days, it's pretty sad commentary. So, and I'm one of those people that don't appreciate voting in a church.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
May we ask questions?
Maybe while we're discussing.
Yeah, we got to get to the discussion part first, and I'm going to try to move, we're going to try to move things up so we can get there quickly.
Is there anyone else who wants to make a comment from the audience this evening? That's what I would expect. All right. Additionally, agenda, also moving things around.
Yeah.
Do we want to maybe move E three to E one?
To D one. So move E three to D one, I'll do it right now. So that, that will be our student reference board. And can we change G two to reflect two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three calendar? Was misprint on my part, I apologize, and move that to D two. So we'll let our student, everybody good with that move? All right, so our student reps could go because they have things to do tonight, so you guys go ahead.
Okay. On November thirtieth, from six-thirty to eight PM, VHS hosted parent-teacher conferences. Parents had a great time meeting their child's teachers and how they were doing in all their classes. Teachers also got to learn more about their students and the students' parents. On December eighth, the VHS staff and students worked police and plan all to raise money for the Connecticut Children Medical Center for those battling cancer. And last night, we had our winter concert where our band and chorus students performed. It was a packed house.
The winter sports season has begun. That includes girls' basketball, their first game being tonight. Boys' basketball, their first game tomorrow, and indoor track and field. Many students participate in these sports and are excited for their seasons. On December twenty-second, the day before winter break, the Student Council will be hosting a pep rally during the second half of our early release day. Individual, individual classes will direct, will decorate leechers for their classmates to root on their friends. The pep rally will include games such as student-teacher basketball and tug-of-war. These activities promote school in-class spirit, and the pep rally is something students look much forward to.
Absolutely, and the concert was awesome. I watched it. Amazing. So great job to all of our musicians and singers. Thank you, guys. Happy holidays.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to our new D two, which is the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three calendar, which is a sort of vaguely worded way of saying, should we close school on April second so that we can have the presidential primary there? To be clear, this is, we need Bolton Center School on April second and a date in August, which is not a problem, and the actual voting day, which we also are generally closed anyway. So what we have now is a school calendar that has us in school on April second, and that will need to be changed in order to accommodate the registrars and the voting, because it has to be at the same place on all of those dates.
So I would offer a recommendation to the board to consider. You could shorten the student calendar by one day, which the board has done previously. If we were going to end school on a Monday, the board voted to make it a hundred and eighty days instead of a hundred and eighty-one, so that the kids could end on a Friday. But we would keep it a teacher day, and we would have a professional development day that day. I recognize that, and I think the registrars recognize too, right, that this impacts families, right? It's the Tuesday before April break. There is a disruption to education, but we have a community-wide problem that we need to solve. So I did speak to both principals. I have spoken to the head of the teachers' union to see if there was any issue with this as a possible recommendation for you to consider. Quite frankly, we could really use the professional development time. We've got a lot going on, and that would be helpful, I think, for teaching and learning. So if it's, so your desire, that would be something that I would suggest that we do. Shorten the student year to a hundred and eighty days, which still keeps us compliant in state law, and have it be a professional development day for staff.
And just to be clear, the professional development days at the end of the year, not the April second day?
No, it would be April, no.
Oh, okay.
Teachers would come in on April second.
Would that be a problem for?
Nope, because that happens on the November date anyways. We always have a PD day that day, and we all work happily together and figure it all out.
That wouldn't present too much traffic issues.
No school buses.
Yeah.
And no parents driving in and out for students, so we, we are able to accommodate.
I did have one question. I think your proposal sounds great, but what about the early voting? Is that going to impact, like, having to use this facility?
No, I'll take that. I'm closest to the mic. We're still working on our early voting location, but it appears that it will be at one oh four Notch Road.
Okay.
Be so aware.
So that doesn't have to be the same place?
No.
Good.
Okay.
No.
Early voting and same-day registration have to be in the same place for all four elections, but not the general polling place.
Can I ask a, can I ask a question? Because I don't know, I don't know that I know the answer. Is the high school in District Two or is the high school District One?
It is in District Two.
So. So where does District Two vote?
At the current time, they vote in Reva Hall at St. Morris's Parish Center.
Okay. So, okay, so.
They have no school, any.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So, all right, can I ask another question? I just, I, I need to make sure about the full impacts before they make an informed decision. Where will the voting occur for the budget or any referendum question?
At the current time, those votes take place at St. Morris Parish Center. As long as it is local, meaning we don't have candidates representing District One and District Two, which would be a state or federal election.
Okay.
We can combine the two districts and hold referendums and local elections in one location.
Okay.
Which at the current time has been St. Morris Parish Center's Reva Hall.
Okay.
Which is what just happened.
Which is, exactly, which is what just happened in November.
Okay. Because I just, I just want to be sure that we're all on the same page, right? That we, I, I think that there, and the board will have to decide this, but we want to be good stewards with the community, right? And we want to, we're all in this together. We're one small community.
You just want to know how much you're biting off.
But what, yeah, we can't bite off more than we can chew, because I can't have kids going to school till June thirtieth. It's just not a good idea.
Now, this is the ask, and this only, this would only come up with the presidential preference primaries, which are every four years. And hopefully, the state won't change the date of it again, but that's out of our control.
Yeah.
So this is a once-in-four-year thing.
I was just looking for that explicit explanation. Thank you.
So if, if we vote as boards to be closed on the fourth, that makes.
Second, the second.
Or two.
Yeah.
That makes the Center School available for elections next year. But it would also make the high school available if the registrars chose to use it?
We have checked out all of the possible locations in town. I don't know how many times we've gone over it. There are reasons not to use the high school here. Part of it is the distance from parking and ADA, you know, in-and-out requirements. And we say we have a beautiful facility here, but it's not, I don't want to be negative, but it's not really user-friendly for an election for people with disabilities. All right, so that's part of it, spacing, setting up. We always get different suggestions. It depends if the gym would be available or not. It depends on, well, here the library is certainly not large enough. It's, so it's, it's not really set up here for an election. We don't really have a huge area with good parking and good, you know, in-and-out. So that's the main reason.
The commons wouldn't be suitable?
It's the, as far as it is now, they have to go in one door and out another. We're, we're hearing some regulation, possible regulation changes, but it makes it where they come out way in the back. Have to go around the building.
So it'd be a long walk.
Yeah. Too long for a handicapped person.
Oh, I see, they have to, yeah.
Yeah.
To go in and out separately.
It, it's, and it's not a short walk at the Center School, but at least they're in the building.
Well, it's right here.
Yeah.
And we put chairs out for people who need to sit down and, you know, fund their way in.
Yeah. So that's, that's the reason for that.
Thank you for explaining.
It may be something for the, you know, Board of Selectmen and Board of Education to consider in tandem in the future as there anything that we can do together to make the schools more friendly to voting. I don't know how practical it is, but I'm just throwing it out there as something for everybody to think about.
And, and the parking is a big thing too, you know, the in-and-out for that. The facility we're in now is ideal. It's got one parking area. It's a one-way, one one-way, and you can go out the other way. And, and the same with the traffic flow for the voters. It's in one door, out the other door. ADA facilities, bathroom facilities are right there. It's, it's very, that one building in town, truthfully, is the most, the most ideal voting situation is at St. Morris Parish Center. Yeah.
Yeah, and if you had the high school, and you would have to have three voting locations, because you'd have three elections at two places, and then budget referendums at a completely different place, because that would impact the schools as well. It could.
The, the budget one would be start during the school year and then end.
Well.
Right. That's the problem with the budget referendums too. So we have to have, you're right.
So it would be accusing potentially the people who.
To the voters.
Yeah.
And then early voting is a whole nother location.
It's the same thing with the referendum too. Even if you could start it, if it started else, you know, elsewhere, you can't move it back to the. It's the same thing with the referendum too. Even if you could start it, if it started else, uh, you know, elsewhere, you can't move it back to the school. It's got to stay where it starts.
No.
The re- referendum.
Okay.
You're not going to change.
That's true too. That's the other thing. A lot of people don't realize that. We have two referendums. They're both, like, once you start it in one place, if you have two, three, four, five, you're in that same location every time. And you're right. So that's a huge problem with, in May, when we start with the budget referendum.
Yeah, the first two would be on school days, so it would be.
Exactly. So we're trying to avoid that.
Yeah, okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Rest on my questions.
All right. Thank you.
Um, so I guess for the point of further discussion, can we have the motion to shorten the school year to one hundred and eighty days? Hundred eighty student days and make April second the professional development day. The move.
It's, it's second.
Is there any more questions or comments on this?
I do.
Sure.
Um, so we're just talking about next year.
We're talking about.
Right, this coming.
This coming April second.
Right, we're not talking about any other years.
Correct.
Four years from now, but we'll know that presumably when we're making the school calendar, not after the state makes some change.
And then I was going to at that time decide on whether or not we're going to shorten the school year, or is this a one-time? Or are we connecting it to using the day? They're like closing school for a day.
So I think this is like a one-time thing for this year, and then we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it in four more years.
Okay.
And I guess I would say if it ends up being the will of the board, that the registrars would need to send an official letter to the, I'll just put this out there, what I think should happen. An official letter to the superintendent and the board chair, um, probably around middle of September. Uh, the year before it's to happen, because we set our calendar in November for the following year.
Yeah.
Oh, we understand that, but the state.
I, I get it. I get it. I get it. It's not your thing. I get it.
We'll let you know as soon as the state lets us know.
Yeah. Fair enough. Okay.
Any more questions or comments?
I just would like to thank Kristen for the work she put into, uh, that I, I brought this issue to her a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Ran around and made sure that the idea that I had would actually work with the registrars, with first people I probably should have spoken to, so I apologize for that, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and certainly I just want to say we want to be good stewards and um, good participants of the community. I, I'm sorry to parents who are now going to have to, myself included, find out what they're going to do with their child on that day. But, uh, we don't seem to have that many options, obviously, from what I'm hearing. It feels about that, the parents that are going to have to find something to do with their children on that day, but we always make do.
Yeah.
Um, at least we have more notice than a snow day, right?
Correct.
Kristen, could you reach out to the Town Rec Department to see if they could maybe have a, I don't know what they call their, their drop-in day?
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Parents who are.
Yeah. Oh, well.
Stuck.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? All those favor the motion to make this professional development day, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone who's opposed? Abstaining? Go forth.
No, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate the short notice and everything that we all got together on.
Yeah. Thank you, guys, for the information. Happy holidays.
Okay, on to our regularly scheduled business, E one, the approval of minutes. Could I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of November ninth, twenty twenty-three Board of Education Business Meeting? For a second. Then, and we, do we have any questions, comments, or edits on the minutes from November ninth? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Could you just all be nice and loud?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Right? Those minutes pass and on to Board of Education Committee Reports and Curriculum.
Curriculum, sorry. Catching up, yeah. Um, we met on Monday. Basically, um, but there's a new math course for liberal arts, um, that they proposed. Um, it aligns with, he's been connected to the university. And he basically, there's no charge, there's no extra fee, there's no text, or there is a text, um, but there's only one text, so it's pretty straightforward. Um, there's also a new AP language course that, um, or new text that she would like to use for the AP language course. Um, it's going to be here at the school available for anyone who wants to read it. That was it.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, on to finance. I can say the finance committee met yesterday and believe we're twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-seven percent expended. Uh, which was twenty-nine percent. Okay, I was thinking it was twenty-five, twenty-seven, but it was twenty-seven, that's compared to twenty-nine last year, and uh, Board of, uh, Special Education fluctuates as always. How's that?
That's, that's good. That's good. Yeah, exactly.
We have a couple of transfers.
Yes, correct. And I just want to remind the board to, um, when we get into the packet, that we have savings and salaries and benefits due to unfilled positions that we currently have, including a science teacher at the high school, um, who, um, had to go out on leave earlier this year and, uh, two paraprofessional positions. So in the November transfer listing from October, now we had a reclassification for, uh, to cover some special education, a subscription, a reclass, uh, in the E P E S Student Activity Accounting Subscription, a reclass to purchase basketballs needed for the basketball season, and a reclass to purchase math classroom instructional supplies. And I would need a motion to approve those transfers, and then I have other things to talk about.
Make a motion to approve the transfers.
Thank you, Ben. Second.
Guys did good on the basketballs for that price. We just glossed on to the, the department.
I know.
That's.
It's a good price.
You guys did well.
Thanks.
Questions, comments on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? More finance?
Correct, yes. So, um, as you can see, as I talked about the savings, uh, that we are currently realizing in salaries and benefits, um, we have a request to transfer twenty thousand dollars from benefits to systems to cover remote monitoring and management licenses. Um, because this includes more devices than correct estimate from last spring. Uh, the estimate crack gave, um, to Novus for our adult devices was two hundred and fifteen, and after their complete audit, we have three hundred and seventy. And they all need to be up to date on remote monitoring and management licenses, um, and this is, uh, necessary also for the patching of windows and third-party applications. Included in this cost are also, uh, endpoints, which provide management of specific reporting and protections, most commonly requested as requirements for cyber liability insurance. So I'm looking for a motion to transfer the twenty thousand dollars from benefits to systems.
The move.
Thank you, Chris. Second, so.
Any questions, comments on this? All those in favor of the transfer, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Abstaining? Okay, that is finance and on to policy.
Policy met last Thursday?
Right.
In fact, last week, um, and we discussed the, uh, four thousand series policies that we will present for first week tonight.
Thank you. We did the VHS Student Reps, uh, Community Meeting Reports. Does anyone have any to refer on?
I attended the Fellowship Fund Meeting in November. Do they have anything to report?
Uh, all right, I'll now turn things over to the superintendent for the superintendent of Schools Reports.
Thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over to Principal Giarn, who has an update for BCS for you.
Good evening. It's a really quick update of uh, BCS happening, so we've been vis- very busy as we approach midway point of the second trimester. A large part of our positive school culture, as you've heard in other Board of Ed meetings, is our Bulldog Bark. And we had a great performer that the PTA sponsored yesterday, BMX Professional Rider, Manny Nagora, who came to K four and then five through eight, and he's ranked number ten in the world, and could do some amazing tricks. The kids were super into it, highly engaging, and he had a tremendous message to the students. Uh, the staff and students are, uh, working very hard in the classrooms, but the excitement in the building as the holiday season approaches is very high. We recently had our PTA-sponsored Holiday Penguin Shop. Uh, students also had this classic book fair. We have our upcoming Winter Spirit Week with funky festive wear. The Friday, the twenty-second, that's a big one. And we have our school-wide winter assembly as well on the twenty-second. So students are super excited, and I want to thank the board for going along with that, because the April second date will be a big help with our teaching and learning. So thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm going to turn it over to Principal Sully for an update for the high school.
So you heard some event updates from our students earlier. Uh, I want to kind of pull a little different twist on things and talk about some updates that relate directly to our school improvement strategic plan. So you heard them talk about the parent-teacher conferences, and that's actually a new thing in Bolton High School for just the last couple of years. It's a culture change. It was a great turnout, especially grades nine and ten, as we build that culture, because we started last year, huge participation. Um, a- and so under our category of communication, we're, we're, we're counting this as a win with the parent-teacher conferences and the use of our, um, our platform, Parents Square, to get those, that information, those reminders out to parents. That was a very successful night. A couple of items under our instructional improvement, uh, component of our strategic plan. Dual enrollment. So, uh, dual enrollment is where you have a Bolton High School student sitting in a Bolton High School classroom with Bolton High School teacher earning college credit simultaneously with nothing but paperwork and a check. Um, a reminder to the board that we have now have, when we say E C E, early college experience, we're doing that with two schools, depending on the course. We've been doing it with UConn, I mean, predates, you know, my joining Bolton District, but we have now our integrated partnership with Eastern, which has opened up some doors. So currently we have two teachers pursuing agreements with universities for two additional E C E classes for next year, which is really exciting. Um, and then last item is, part of our schedule here that we have at the school allows for us to have, um, mini PD sessions, eighty minutes once a week with all teachers. There are in three different groups to, to make that manager in the school day, but we have that time. We really try to do quality things with it. This last week, um, we did, uh, peer observations. Peer observations is something we did a lot before COVID. Did a little last year, we're getting back into it. Um, and it was fascinating to, uh, participate in the debrief of that as teachers reflected on relevance. Relevance was something that came up in our surveys, it's something we're talking about, and teachers went into each other's classrooms and looked for relevance, and we had a great conversation about that this week. And that is my report.
Thank you very much.
Very cool.
Now I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Director of Teaching and Learning, uh, it's Jaleel Casper, who's going to provide a K three reading waiver update.
I knew you'd be here. We've been talking about waivers forever.
Correct.
Um, so as you may or may not recall, in the fall of last year, the state, um, made an announcement that there were going to be approved programs aligned with the science of reading. And there were going to be several options for districts accordingly. We could move to one of the approved, uh, programs automatically. We could request an extension, which meant we would still have to move to one of those programs automatically, or we could write a waiver. And at that time, that was really the most logical step, because the waiver gave us time. We didn't want to jump into another program without really fully vetting it uh, and spending some time with that program. So we wanted time to examine the materials in depth. And we believe that that waiver was what got us to that point. And we knew that we had additional program needs, but we did not want that pressure of committing to a program before we were ready. So very recently, in fact, I just got notification early last week, after submitting the waiver in February of twenty twenty-three, we had one-to-one interviews in November to, so that they could ask questions back and forth. And, uh, there were, I believe, eighty-five districts in the state of Connecticut who applied for the waiver. Um, our waiver was, it seems transitional. There were four categories. There were seventeen districts uh, only who were awarded the waiver. And most districts, I would say the majority, were sort of in our category of transitional, which on our sheet showed us that we had some components, but we needed some more explicit instruct, instruction in other areas. This worked well and was very timely, because we had already made the decision to look at one of the approved programs to sort of close those gaps. So this was very validating. It helped us realize that we were on the right track. Um, and we are in a good place to continue with that. Um, so we did pilot units from two of the approved programs in the spring. This year, we are in a pilot year zero of one approved program. And, um, our phonemic awareness and phonics programs that we have in district are the part of our, um, programming that were approved. And we're piloting where it was just pointed out that we knew we needed some support. So I'm very confident that we're headed in the right direction, and our feedback is aligned with what we knew. So we're going to continue in that same.
Same.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, we also did apply for, uh, the Small Town Right to Read Grant. Uh, Monica did a great job, and we have already been approved, and we have been awarded seventy-three thousand dollars. That's awesome.
And we did not think that, that, we did not know that that was going to be something available to us, so that was also a concern. We were looking at programs, so we're very happy to be able to provide it.
Yeah, so we will have, you know, money to put towards what we need to do, should that become our approved program, so. Good news.
Absolutely. I wa- I thought seven thousand.
Yep, nope, seventy-three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Thank you, Monica. So now I'm going to turn it over to Monica for the Next Generation Accountability Report.
I'm just going to.
Go right back. Yeah.
Forgive the possible silly question, but what is pilot year zero?
Oh, it just means we're not in a full, like, we did not purchase every single component. Um, the program that we're working with has an open source component, so that we did not have to purchase, um, every, we didn't have to purchase workbooks for every single student. The teachers make a decision. They're like, oh, in fact, we were able to take the student workbooks. Um, and we're allowed to, we can adjust them because they're open source. So for example, we felt, um, that in many cases, there wasn't enough white space for students to write. So it was very simple. We were stuck with a workbook where we had no choice. Um, I, it's, I know it sounds like a minor thing, but the workbook pages are not perforated and not really easy to pull out, to bring home, uh, which seems like something small, but winds up turning into, you know, you don't have all these ripped pages inside the book. So we're able to sort of print what we need and work with that. And I will say, um, one of the criteria that we were looking at when we were calling those programs down to the two that we looked at in the spring, um, was that we were putting real books in kids' hands. So many of those programs had basal readers, where they may have had some of the same, um, stories. They may have had some of the same excerpts, but they were in a large anthology format, sometimes concealable in newsprint, and it's just a very different experience. So in this case, our students have the actual texts, actual hardcover and paperback books that go with those units. And the grant money, we were able to purchase with some grant money that we were awarded um, last year, or actually in the summer, at the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, but we were able to, uh, purchase what was required. This additional funding would allow us to purchase more recommended texts to build up teachers' classroom libraries, so that's going to be great.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Good question, Ben.
Your negative one.
I'm going to hope this quicker works. Um, every year, uh, the state puts. Please. I had to do that. I'm not really sure what the text is. So every year the state puts out the Next Generation Accountability Report, and that looks at twelve indicators in schools. So this is kind of just like a little primer, just to go over. It's a reminder. It's a very broad set of 12 indicators that we're looking at, and it's sort of a holistic picture of your district. So I am going to show you very, very briefly, in small print, and I want you to read it off. The chart that we had from last year, because we've talked repeatedly, the 21, 22 school year being our baseline. Because other than that, we're looking at 18, 19. We know we had the 19, 20 pandemic year with no data, and then 20, 21. So we are looking at, this is 22, 23 now. So it is really good for us to track progress, to look at areas where we need to improve our data collection, record keeping, where we are having success, where we need to continue to focus, and it provides transparency. So everything I'm going to show you is available on the public site. This isn't even from the secure site. This is what is available on state side. So this just makes sure that we're not making sure our curriculum's too narrow. We can look at things other than just straight up scores. We're looking at a whole picture of our district. And it's a way we want to track some of our efforts and how we're doing. And there is a, so these are the 12 indicators. What we focused on last year was, we have, there was an issue with chronic absenteeism, and I think that was a relic from pandemic times when we went to hybrid. And it was our taking our students and our families a little while to sort of get back into the swing of doing school and being in school every day. Making sure our students are ready to move on to college, and that our ninth graders are on track to graduation. It does have our academic growth, but our academic growth here is really only grades four through eight, as tested on the Smarter Balance assessment. And how many students are participating? We also looked at physical fitness and arts access. So this is just the math. They give us a set score. We're working toward a certain percentage. And based on our progress towards those percentages, that's where these scores come from. So this is what last year looked like. You can see how it's laid out on all of the indicators, and then way to the right is the state. So we did go up this year, but like in small amounts. So in a way that I think that we know we have to focus in some areas, but you'll see there are a couple of highlights, and these are things that we were looking at last year to improve. And we made some dramatic progress. So these are highlighted because we can look at, I think we increased by 10 percentage points for chronic absenteeism and also significantly with our high need students. And our percentage of students that are on track to high school graduation went to 100%. And honestly, that partially was some record keeping, making sure that we were accurately reporting students who were maybe spending half a day in a magnet school or getting elective credit somewhere else. And then we brought that here into school. So 100% of our students on track to graduation. And then an increase in arts access. Again, we were looking at how we were doing course codes, and they created clusters because some of our courses were sort of living in that ATV cluster and arts. So if you're doing desktop publishing or graphic design, is that a career technical edge, like a computer course? Or an art course, and it can be in both places. So we were able to increase that access. Everything else went up a small amount. These were just highlighted because they were dramatic improvements. And that's where we were focusing a lot of our energy last year as well. So we've shown that improvement. Our freshman, physical fitness, we were looking at last year and trying to find ways we increased our participation rate. And it did go up, but we're still looking for more improvement. We want to make sure our students are being more physically active, looking at physical activity as something that is for their entire life. You know, working on health and fitness as a life skill. So that's one of the things we're looking at. This is our ELA in mathematics. Our SRBI process, which is scientifically research-based interventions, which has generally focused on just the academic piece, moving that to expand it to multi-tiered systems of support, which also brings in the social and emotional learning piece as well. So it sort of puts us in a place where we want to look at the whole student. So if a student is struggling, do they have a high absence rate? What is their disciplinary record look like? Is it only grade? So it kind of puts us in a place where we're looking at a broader collection of data. Providing focus PD for teachers, mathematics, particularly grades three through eight. So we are looking to shore up their mathematical knowledge and comfort level with teaching more advanced concepts. We are continuing teacher clarity focus in all content areas, which is where we have very clear success criteria. I know that Mr. Sully spoke to relevance. It is a strong emphasis on making sure that students are aware of why they're being taught something, how it is relevant to what they're doing, and how it relates to their verbal skills in our portrait of a graduate, and continue to ensure that they're learning in a safe and supportive place because without that, they're not going to be successful.
Any questions? Great job. Thank you very much, Monica. That concludes my report this evening.
We have no unfinished business. The new business and POE committee assignments. I have had conversations with all of you about this. I think we're pretty well set. The biggest changes from the past, losing Scott, we lose his expertise for buildings and grounds in Kappa, and we have the new finance situation. So I think we have personnel, Chris, and then myself. We're all willing to stay on personal rights.
All right, so buildings and grounds are going to be you and Ben.
Yeah.
Right? Curriculum, Maria, right, or no?
This was the question that I didn't specifically ask you.
It's possible, no.
Okay.
Okay.
No, for personal freedom, right?
Well, if we need somebody, I could, yeah, either I could go.
I was thinking that we were studying to stay on.
Yeah, I didn't specifically discuss that. I was more.
You know, it's not, it's not, you know, you said that goat, and then I have that extra thing too, so. But if you need me, fine, but.
When's the next curriculum meeting?
March. Okay, so for right now, I've got Sue and you. That's what I'll do. Sue and you for right now.
Sue and you. All right, well, that's cool.
All right, that's cool. And then we have finance.
Okay, so finance is the new nightmare. It's a large commitment. I personally don't love the new situation, but it has to be one of Chris and Maria, and I think Maria has agreed to throw herself under the bus.
Along with Ashley.
And I think we had a partial, I don't want to pin you down, or like I said, no pressure. You're willing to do that. We could.
We'll muffle through it together, the three of us. How about that? All right.
We do have the three, one of which is Ross, Bob, Nora, so they're veterans, at least. Amanda Gordon, I believe, Bob Nora are slacking them representatives. I mean, I don't think this has to lock anybody into anything for, and I certainly don't personally expect everybody to go to every meeting. I mean, it's really honestly too much time commitment to do all of the Board of Ed meetings and all the Board of Finance meetings. Budget season, as you know, from last year is more time consuming. I don't know how vital it is the rest of the time, but. Well, and I think it's partly up to the members, maybe to new board that you envision, but that's a discussion for members. So if you're able to, if you're willing, but.
All right.
And we'll have you, have no other burdens of committee membership. But it's, it's a work in progress. I mean, functionally, it's going to be the same as the Board of Finance has operated in the past from like a setting referendum type perspective, but how it's different, I could possibly tell you. I don't know that anyone else can, because every time we've asked questions about this, there's a lot of vagueness. There's like some intent from the Charter Commission, and a lot of the answers were, well, we had to ask the lawyer. So.
Might be some making it what we wanted to.
I think that there is probably some opportunity for that, so. And there's going to be two other people who are on another board as well, so they're going to be equally probably motivated to lessen the burden from that perspective. But we could certainly, you know, if you want to not go to meetings, I could go to some of the meetings. If you plan on continuing to go to some meetings, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely, yeah, certainly during budget season, I, 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 right, it's just, right, it's just necessary. But I concur with Ashley's analysis of some of the other stuff. You know, we, we can still provide a monthly report with all the information on there. You are the stewards of that to begin with. I, I think that that, quite frankly, should suffice. And I think that's a conversation that we need to have as a committee. When we get together in the first meeting is the 21st of December at 7:15 PM at Town Hall.
I, I just want to say that I, I think that as we enter into this new period of budgeting, we need to make sure that it is clear to the finance committee that they do not have any authority over our budget. We, meaning us as a board, set the budget by state law. And so even though we have this new mechanism, they don't have a veto on how we budget. The town sets how much we get to spend, but we have absolute authority in how we spend them.
So that's the functional, functionally the same in that regard as well. It's just that they theoretically have the resources of the people who made the budget, or at least our part of the budget, and then the other part of the budget, like on hand and in-house, I guess, is part of the
Yeah.
Decision-making, which is what the intent was, but to Chris's point, that's, that would be a change that I don't think was outlined. I don't know if anybody's looking for that, but.
Yeah.
We don't know. I mean, Ross and Bob are veterans, so they probably don't expect that on the other person's, a newcomer, so.
Yeah. And then for policy, Chris and Sue, right? A little tag team, policy. Okay, and then transportation?
Yeah, we got Diana down as transportation. I don't know if in the next couple of years, we even have.
We got a ways to go, so.
It's not a committee that meets very often, I don't know.
We only, we've only ever met. Yeah, for when we go to do another contract.
I would jump onto that one if you want, if you want a second.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't even know when. That might be, I mean, a couple of years from now.
Yeah, correct.
Unless we want to follow.
Next meeting in a couple of years. Music's my ear.
Just by way of follow-up, since we're talking about transportation, I just want to let you know that we are fully staffed.
Oh, yeah.
And our, and we're going to be putting out, they sent me a flyer today to ask to put on the town website and I'm going to ask the schools to send out to families. They're looking to hire spare drivers so that our manager doesn't end up being the spare driver and gets pulled out. But the good news is, right now, this week, we're fully staffed.
Wow. Public comment last week.
And it does address the public comment from the last meeting. So I just wanted to let you all know that.
So you won't have to have a transportation meeting to avoid the conflict.
Correct. So the only other thing we need to shore up here are the community liaison assignments. So we've got Fulton Scholarship.
Yeah, we have.
Chris. We've got CREC, District Safety Council, and PTA.
Have we had CREC meetings?
Yeah, thank you. Are you staying on that too? No, okay. All right, thank you.
As many as you are able.
So then we need a liaison for District Safety Council and for PTA.
District Safety had Ben Scott. I could consider it. I don't know when.
It's usually a Monday morning at like an 8:00 AM. But I mean, if we need to move the meeting, we've just got to figure it out with some of our external parties, like.
We try to schedule three times a year for updates, and then if something were to happen that we would need to come together, it would be an additional week.
I know we do the annual plan, which is
Right.
Sort of a tweaking, right?
I would help out, but that's just a tough time for me. I'm at the bus stop, at the end of the road.
Well, like I said, if
When's the next one?
When's the next one?
We, we haven't, we've waited for representative. We haven't scheduled.
Oh, okay.
So I mean, if we need to find a different time or, you know, whatever, we can work with our outside people as well to try to figure that out.
I can try to do that.
Okay, thanks. All right, and then we need a PTA liaison.
The PTA liaison is.
Was that Scott too?
Yeah, yeah, it was Scott. I wish, you know. I think we actually had Diana down as that, and she originally asked me what she was supposed to be doing. And I don't think since that time, the PTA has somewhat been reborn and is
Has new life.
More active than it was at that time. Because then it was only Zoom meetings. I think it was before the new leadership came on. And it was sort of a, we don't know, because there was somebody like Kate L was on the PTA, or Allison was. So they were already going to the meeting, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that you guys necessarily have to. It's, it's just been something that's always existed. It existed before I got here.
Yeah.
I mean, I, you know, I go to meetings when. Yeah, yeah, right.
I told you, I didn't want to ask you to do anything else. That's why.
Naturally, I mean.
I don't know. I mean, maybe between the two.
Thank you.
Could it be like an ex officia, like someone on the PTO just reporting to us?
Well, yeah, we could, we could.
Do you want to report the PTA meetings to us?
Us?
You're going to be joining us for these lovely.
Oh, we could put you on as like a standing agenda item if you want.
Yeah, in between.
Or like every other month? You want to do every other month instead of every month? You tell me.
I mean, we have.
Yeah, and obviously I have.
Every other.
I know what's going on.
I guess what I would be reporting on, not necessarily the inner working private stuff.
Right.
Yeah, the public sessions are, how often are they?
It's like every other month.
They are, they are every other month. So maybe that, I mean, that would be, yeah, the executive board or whatever is not.
So when's your next meeting?
There just was one last week.
You just, you just met, right? So not again.
There was one last week. Was that a public meeting or a?
Was it only last week?
It was a summer.
February is the next one. So February agenda, PTA.
And I can use my connections in the PTA to help me keep the board informed as well.
All right, sounds good.
Congratulations.
We're so happy to have you.
Happy to have anybody. I mean, honestly, we need to have a better two-way flow than we've had in recent years. You know, the, like I said, we used to have a person that was a natural, because they were already there, and it was just like, oh, well, this is what we did.
And if it's not you, somebody else, or you can just send me a, whatever, whatever works.
Yeah, and I can certainly be made more aware of things and report out. You know, we can have this be a work in progress, make it as we are image.
Yeah.
Also.
Perfect. All right.
So I think we're mostly.
I think we're good.
Covered.
Yeah, so I will, yeah, we're good. Yep.
Okay. Uh further questions, and we can shuffle as needed, see how things go. It's not a life sentence for anybody. Okay, that's committee assignments, we did the calendar earlier. Would you like to fill us in on the Novus Insight High Priority Remediation Projects for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three bid waiver situations?
So I just wanna remind the board that um I had worked with the town to have Novus Insight provide a technology audit back in. Uh twenty twenty-two in the spring due to challenges that we had experienced with crack uh and cyber liability insurance.
You didn't even know how many things we have.
As a result of the audit findings, both the district and the town use Novus to complete the technology high priority remediation projects. Last year. And that were identified in the audit to ensure that we would be in a better situation with regards to our cyber liability insurance. And other findings that needed to be immediately addressed, and there were a few of them. Uh the auditor has shared that both the Board of Ed and the town will have findings on our audit this year. Regarding using Novus without a bid waiver, even though. It is a C R C O G awarded I T service vendor. Both the board and the town are then going to be required to provide in writing how we plan to remediate this finding in the audit. The auditor has suggested the best way to do this is for the Board of Ed and the town separately to approve a retroactive bid waiver. For Novus Insight for the high priority remediation projects for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. So I'm hoping you'll support me in this endeavor because I have to remedy this in what we have to write up and send to the state. So I would love for there to be a motion to retroactively waive the bid to award Novus Insight the contract to provide services for the technology. High priority for remediation projects through the I T Services Collaborative Professional Services Agreement Number C R S B two. As provided by the Capital Region Council of Governments, C R C O G, the Connecticut Council of Small Towns, COST, and the Purchasing Council. For F Y twenty-three.
So.
Thanks, thanks.
Great questions.
It's a highly competitive price, and they are the best out there.
And it already got.
And, yeah, but it's a fair question, but that's why all of these um collaboratives have been put together. Is to get the best possible pricing, particularly for small towns, because we get very constrained by our size. In getting sometimes the most competitive prices. Fair question, though.
So which auditor, is this the town's auditor or is it a state auditor?
Nope, this is the town's auditor, who audits both the town and us, but then the audit report gets sent to the state. And the state then sends me back a letter and this town back a letter and says, how are you going to remediate these findings and what are you going to do?
So we have no ability to push back on what the auditor found and say that doesn't look right, or.
Um I may have the ability to talk to um the state. After we at least get this part done, because I have some questions about whether or not we even really need to waive the bid. Based on the fact that the small town piece and all of that, um but he's not the one I can push back.
Okay.
Fair question, so we'll need a vote on that.
Any other questions? Um also favor the motion, please say, I. Opposed abstaining. Next.
Right, so again, then we then moved our I T services, I just wanna remind everyone from crack to Novus Insight as a result of everything that happened. Um and. The services that they provide to Bolton include managed technology support, backup services for V, Microsoft three sixty-five. Cybersecurity endpoint licenses, know before training program services, private cloud hosting, email filtering. And other related technology needs. Again, the auditor has shared that both the Board of Ed and the town will have a finding this year in the audit report. About using Novus without a bid waiver for our managed I T support, even though it is a Connecticut Region. Council of Government awarded I T service vendor, so. He's again suggesting that the answer to this is a retroactive bid waiver to be approved by both the town and the Board of Ed. So I'll be looking for a motion to retroactively waive the bid to award Novus Insight as the managed I T support for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. Thank you, Chris, thank you so.
Any questions on this? Paul's favor the motion, please say hi. Hi, opposed. Or abstaining. That passes as well, honor, sleep easy, so happy, on to resignations.
I do not have any to report this.
Um new course, E C E math or little arts.
If you didn't want to tell about the course, this is the course that the subcommittee um spoke about. Uh there's no additional course, this um cost, this is the E C E or Eastern Connecticut State University. Um and Mr. Jordan uh is able to teach that course, it has been approved by U C S U.
Okay, I think that covers everything, so we're looking for a motion to approve the E C E math awards. Second. Sue Maria, is there any more questions or comments, I always have the additional cost question to answer, and we have a person in house. So. Any one have anything? Uh also favor of the motion approving this course, please say hi.
Hi, hi.
Not opposed or abstaining. Uh yeah, that's a no-brainer, so that passes, thank you, um text adoption, anyone else the. Song is where here.
Yes.
Or after first read.
Yeah, the first read is for A P pre calculus, uh we are able to, uh the college board created an E P level pre calculus this year. It is essentially the same pre calculus course with, I think, one small unit that is added, but they only have one book. For A P pre calculus, so this is the text that is recommended by the college board. Um it is the only text that we have that we are aware of at this point, uh so we are requesting that we do a first read of A P pre calculus. This is available uh in its entirety on the line at the Board of Education. So we do not have a physical copy of the Board of Education, uh but should someone choose to preview it, it is available online. The other one is, they say, I say there is a correction, it is the fifth edition, not the fourth, it's on our minutes for the subcommittee, but it should. Be the fifth edition, I verified with Mrs. Blay, this is a core text and would be a purchased class text. Mrs. Blay has been using excerpts from this book in addition to other materials before she committed to this one. But she finds that the readings in this are of the higher quality that she likes, and that we would be putting these books in students' hands. Instead of her just using it for teaching purposes.
How many uh of each of these books do we, like we need, or projecting?
Um I believe we were looking at about fifteen for A P language. Uh but it's based on student numbers, so we may be a little bit conservative until you hire and pre calculus.
Thank you.
Just for, you remember, we, and this applies to policies as well, we do like a first read of these, which is just the presentation of the. You know, I went through the curriculum committee of the policy, the policy committee and the six. We have a month for a public to theoretically review this book, or any of us to theoretically review the book and what the policies. So the first read will be for us to, oh, you explain why we're doing what we're doing, and then have the next month to read up on it. And do whatever we might wanna do before the second read, which we also have some policies.
And we do have a paper copy of that text um in the board office right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you very much. And speaking of first reads, we have another nineteen policies that are up for first read.
Policy, we've been very busy.
Yes, we have forty-nine for second read, but a wee nineteen for first read, does someone want to explain to us what we're looking at?
I'll do my best.
Thank you, I'm sure you always do.
All right, so the first five are marked for deletion, um the first four of those. Are being deleted mainly because of the new code of ethics, which is policy number eight uh under this list. And then the equal opportunity plan uh is covered by.
Uh already in uh four thousand and five thousand series for students and staff in non-discrimination.
Alright, and so then uh four one 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 dot three. Increasing educated diversity, uh so there's, we're making technical edits, like copy editing tech edits. Uh and updating the policy to incorporate a new state law. Which requires that any board employee involved hiring completed video training module on implicit bias. And anti-bias in the hiring process. I'll see four one one two dot three. Administrative regulations for use and disclosure of criminal justice information. Uh this one is marked for deletion because it is already covered under our employment and student teacher checks policy. Four one one two dot five, which we updated in twenty twenty-one. Policy four one one two dot nine, code of ethics, this is a new policy. Uh as I mentioned, is replacing the vision, the code of ethics, mission statement, goals. So it's required um because of some updated legislation, that we have this new policy and. Uh I should point out that it's not to be confused with the board's code of ethics policy, which is nine two seven one. And not being deleted. I but I I believe uh in general, what it lays out as code of ethics is more or less. Very similar to what we currently already have, so no real. Earth shaking changes there.
Correct.
Um four one one six, uh this is a new policy administrative regulations regarding concussion management. And training for athletic coaches. Basically, it's implementing, it's a new administrative regulation. For concussion management and training, uh just required by some changes in state law. Four one one eight dot two three one, uh this is being renumbered as four one one eight dot two. Alcohol, tobacco, and drug-free workplace, uh there are a few updates due to changes in state law. Mainly to address the fact that cannabis is now legal in Connecticut, but because it remains illegal under federal law. Uh it states that employee use of cannabis is a violation of our substance use policy. If that use affects the employee's performance of their job. Four one one eight. Two, three, four, uh actually, that's, uh okay, it used to be four one one eight dot two, three, four. Is now becoming four one one eight dot three. What I had in my notes, is that correct, which didn't, or is it just a new policy? Oh, hold on, hold on, that's the one I just, nope, it is not the same one.
Those psychotropic drugs.
This is the psychotropic drugs one. I'm a little confused now.
Please now too, so hang on. Yeah, four one one eight dot two, three, four has now become four one one eight dot three.
Okay.
You're right.
So it is a renumbering.
Correct.
Um it is also updated with some technical edits, uh such as updated legislative references, other than that, it's identical.
Yep.
Um four one one eight dot eight, sudden cardiac arrest awareness. Uh this is a newly required policy due to changes in state law. It requires all coaches to be educated about sudden cardiac arrest through a program that has been or will be developed. By the State Department of Educate, State Board of Education, excuse me, and to share information about sudden cardiac arrest. With parents of athletes and obtain informed consent from those parents for their children to participate in school sports. Four one one eight dot nine, bloodborne pathogens, also a new policy. Uh this one required by changes in federal regulations, uh the policy directs the board to establish a grid plan. For how we will deal with incidences where employees might come into contact, will be exposed to potentially infectious materials. And protect them from bloodborne pathogens. Four one two zero dot two, abuse or neglect of disabled adults, uh this is a new policy required by a change in state law. It requires all board employees to report the suspected abuse and or neglect of adults ages eighteen to sixty. Who have an intellectual disability, um it provides separate reporting practices for employees who are mandated state reporters. And those who are not mandated, so the mandated state reporters would be like our teachers and psychologists and administrators, I think. Um whereas non-mandated would be receptionists or janitorial staff. My understanding is that basically the idea is the state wants a larger group of people looking out for the welfare of people. Who have intellectual disabilities. Four one two zero dot four. I keep five oh four and A D A personal, um again, just some technical edits to this, no major changes. I think most of the edits are updating addresses of where you report concerns. Four one two one, substitute teacher, substitute teachers, uh this policy is being deleted. Because it is already covered by policies four one one two, hiring certified staff. And four one one two dot two, hiring of non-certified staff. Five one one two, admission to public schools at age five, uh this is a policy being updated. To conform with recent changes in state law requiring that children must have turned age five prior to September first. Of the year they enter school, it does make provision for children who will not turn age five. By September first, to petition the building principal for their student to be admitted. Policy five one four one dot five, suicide prevention and intervention, it's being revised to reflect changes in state legislation. Uh the requirement that board employees must report knowledge, but it requires board employees to. Report any knowledge they might have of a student's suicide attempts, suicidal threats or suicidal agitation. Uh which is actually already in the policy, so that aspect is not changed. And then lastly, five one four two dot one, uh it's being renamed. It used to be physical activity, undirected play and student discipline is being renamed recess and play-based learning. Uh the policy being renamed and updated in light of new state legislation. Uh but it is essentially the same policy as before, uh still requires for grades pre K through five. That the administration allow a minimum of twenty minutes per day for recess or replay. And that. That staff cannot discipline students by withholding access to recess. Except in very specific, very limited circumstances.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, now we're in the second read, so. Yeah, yeah, so if we could have a motion to approve policies. Four one one five, athletic coaches evaluation termination, four one one eight point five one becomes four one one eight point five, social media. Five one three six is new pledge of allegiance, five one four one point seven revised to four one one six, student supports concussion. Six one one one, school calendar, six one four five point six, travel and exchange programs, six one five three field trips. Six one five four homework, six one six two instructional resources for teachers, six one seven one Individuals with Disability Act. Six one seven two point four, parent family engagement for Title One students, six one seven two point six, credit for online courses. And six two one oh, new parental access to instructional materials.
What's the motion for?
Motion to approve those.
Are approved, the other ones.
The others are all deletions, so I tried to put it together. The others are all deletions, so I tried to put it together. I'm sorry. I, I thought I said that. I apologize.
So move.
Thank you.
Second. You say number six?
Did I say number six, six, four, five? I might not have. Travel and exchange programs. Thank you.
Uh, I have a question.
Uh, okay.
Yes, I, I don't know. I don't know what this means. So we are going to take a vote on whether to revise policy five, one, four, one dot seven to four, one, one, six. But four, one, one, six is also up for a first read. So what version of four, one, one, six are?
So I would say, I would guess that my thought is that five, one, four, one point seven goes away. So I, so I guess we're gonna take it off and leave it on for the next one, right? Yeah, good call. Yeah. So five, one, four, one point seven will become deleted. But we shouldn't do it until next time.
Right, right.
Right? So we're gonna remove that one next time.
Second read one revises that one. So it deletes it, replaces it with four, one, one, six, which we are now considering for
A first read.
A first read.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll put.
So changing the number, we're approving, changing the number this month and then approving the policy itself.
No, I don't think so.
I don't, because I think there were some changes in, I, I mean, I can.
Yeah, I think.
There were changes included with the policy, wouldn't have just.
You're right.
Renumbering.
Right. So we're just gonna leave five, one, four, one point seven out. And next time you're gonna vote to delete that and you're gonna vote to add four, one, one, six. Got that one? So then I'm just looking for a motion for those other policies. And so we had a motion from Sue and a second from Ben.
Well, I guess I could, uh.
Amend it.
To amend the motion.
Yeah.
This, this draw, five, one, four, one, that's it. Whoever made the motion accepts that.
Can I make a comment on one of them or share it for discussion?
I think we're in discussion now.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we are. Yeah, like, yes.
The travel and exchange programs probably doesn't happen very often. But it does refer to like a July first cutoff date. Is that a hard date in the board? Accept anything after that?
Well.
Or is that a firm date?
We, we need the firm date because there are extra things that have to happen in order to make it all work. So, and that's the.
But if there's a, yeah, situation, the, does the board have an opportunity to approve?
It would come to me. It would come to me. It wouldn't likely come to the board. Cause that would be an administrative decision as to whether or not, you know, could they get all the information that we needed in time because there's credits involved because it's usually high school or.
It just seems a little rigid.
I know there's extenuating circumstances because my family took an exchange student in October when there was an emergency with his host family and it was a different town. It wasn't Bolton where it came from.
Yep, yep.
It's not like policies are that rigid.
Yeah, I think there's a cutoff date because there were situations that have arisen in legal settings because we get these policies from the board's attorney from shipment in Goodwin. Whereby then student legally couldn't be here or the student didn't have the credits to be here, or the credits weren't going to transfer back to where the student was going back to. And so it became a complicated, large, expensive legal problem. And that's why shipment has the date that they have. I think it's to avoid circumstances that have arisen in other places. Yeah, I mean, if you guys.
Second, third.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think we get to August first and we're, we're at a, a hard stop at that point.
The date more does the board have an opportunity to hear?
Yeah, I, I mean, certainly, you know, anybody can come to a meeting under public right comments to say something. Um, whether or not the board directs the superintendent to do something about it is something different. Okay?
Uh, does anyone have any other questions or comments about the first thirteen second reads with the revisions? Paul's a favor of the motion, please say I.
I.
I oppose abstaining. Want me to read these others?
Somebody can.
Uh, can we have a motion, please, to delete the following policies, six, one, one, four, emergency disaster preparedness, six, one, one, four point one, fire drill, six, one, one, five ceremonies and observances, six, one, one, five point one, daily observances, six, one, two, one, non-discrimination, six, one, four, one, curriculum committee, six, one, four, one dot three, one, two migrant students, six, one, four, one dot three, two, three, access to electronic networks, six, one, four, one dot three, two, six, online social networking, six, one, four, two dot one, family life and sex education, six, one, four, two dot five, two, democracy and education, six, one, four, four, controversial issues, six, one, four, four dot four, reacting to political action, six, one, four, five, extra class activities, six, one, four, five dot two, interscholastic competition, intramural athletics, six, one, four, five dot three, publications, six, one, four, five dot five, organizations, six, one, four, five dot five, one, National Honor Society, six, one, four, five dot five, two, extracurricular and co-curricular activities, six, one, four, five dot eight, activity funds management, six, one, four, six dot one, one, grade weighting, class rank, six, one, five, four dot one, tests and student work, six, one, five, six dot five, instructional planning services, six, one, six, one dot three, comparability of services, six, one, six, two dot five, one, surveys of students, student privacy, six, one, six, two dot seven, educational software in classrooms, six, one, six, three point three, live animals in classrooms, six, one, six, four dot one, one, drugs, tobacco, alcohol, six, one, six, four dot one, two, aids, six, one, seven, one dot two, preschool special education, six, one, seven, two dot one, two, magnet schools, six, one, seven, two dot three, homeschooling, six, one, seven, two dot four, one, Title One programs, six, one, seven, three, homebound instruction, six, one, eight, oh, evaluation of instructional programs, six, one, eight, one, evaluation of special education programs.
I could hear a beat.
Which one is, I'd love to.
So I'm, I'm, I'm having you, you're, you presented that. So I think we just need a second.
Oh, sure.
Absolutely, that's.
Okay. Uh, any questions or comments about any of these deletions? We didn't go over these last month.
The purpose just to streamline.
Yeah, so let me, yeah.
Many of them were covered. Chris had a spiel like he did
Yeah.
last month, and a lot of them were covered under other places. I feel like there's, there's legal changes, things covered under other place. I think it was the primary reason for most of them.
Yeah, and also years ago, CADE, Connecticut Association of Boards of Ed, was our policy. Right? And we moved to shipment. Um, because Chris and I were going to, Chris especially was going to be editing till the cows came home previously. Um, and we just needed to be up to speed. So we're gonna be going, I'm in the process of going through each section of policies to delete anything old that still remains to update us. Um, that is my project for the year.
Actually, if you have questions about any one of these, I do have my notes from last time, so I'd be happy to.
All right. Did we vote on that? Or I think.
No.
Answering her. Okay, yeah.
Questions, comments, we'll repeat them. Uh, all is a favor of the motion, please say I.
I.
You're not opposed, abstaining. Alrighty, on to the always wonderful future business.
No, not many.
And now, um, I'd like a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing the superintendent's mid-year review of balls and to invite the superintendent. So. Questions, comments? All right. Thank you all.
Thanks, guys. Happy holidays.